Find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Just to get started, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in a plastic sleeve on the back wall as soon as you enter. Before we get started, I will ask our chairman, please stand and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
First up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to speak about or tell us about that is not already scheduled on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to do it. And we'd ask you to just come up to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live. Is there anybody for community notes?
Yeah, I just want everybody to know that on Sunday, this Sunday at 5:00 PM at the Seton, former Seton Hospital, there's going to be a meeting at 5:00 PM with the developer Kevin Mattson and several others. So, everybody is invited if they want to know they're going to indulge us in what they are planning on for the Seton Hospital. We all know there's some various good ideas that they have, and they're going to indulge in that, and I urge everybody to go.
Any other community notes? Just would like to ask the council if anybody will have any conflict with any of tonight's votes?
Yes, I believe Resolution 137, 2017 includes the approval of a liquor license for Colby College and an employee, so I will recuse myself from that vote.
I will recuse myself from that vote as well.
Great, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? There is no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. First is Resolution 128, 2017.
A resolution providing for appointing Rosemary Winslow to the King's Charity Relief Committee via resolve by the City Council of City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the City Council hereby authorize the appointment of Rosemary Winslow to the King's Charity Relief Committee with the term to expire in 2020.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Rosemary. Next is Ordinance 129, 2017.
Move to read by summary only.
Second.
All in favor?
An ordinance providing for amendment to zoning, this rezoning is necessary to allow KV Federal Credit Union to construct a branch at this location.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, just here, summary as to what it is. I'm not exactly sure what the rezone and why was it reported. I just wanted, just curious.
Well, I know we have some representatives here, so probably best for that.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dan Nichols. I'm a member of the KV Federal Board of Directors. The reason we're asking for this zoning change is the fact that we would like to purchase these two pieces of property, one at 70 Oak Street and at 299 Main, that currently, the permitted uses do not allow for financial institutions. It's as simple as that.
Will there be any special provisions to the contract zone, like, will there be any special provisions to the contract zone?
The only special provision I know is that it remain finance institution. Use of the property remain for that purpose.
Correct, yes.
And the planning board has recommended approval of this.
Yes, sir.
Right.
I was just curious.
That's the only condition I know.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we'll move to-
I just want to remind the council too, we don't often get ordinance amendments, but ordinance amendments to our zoning ordinance require two-thirds vote. And this is only the first of requiring two votes.
Great. All those in favor? Resolution 130, 2017.
Move to read by summary only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for action regarding unacceptable ways in the City of Waterville. Summary, this is proposed to forestall vacating a number of paper streets to allow the Kennebec Water District and the Waterville Sewer, Sewage District to obtain easements for water and sewer lines in those streets.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Rather than go on a long spiel, do you have questions that I can answer?
Basically, the laws, the law is kind of forcing the hand where you're basically extending it so that the paper street does not be, go back to the property owners, so that the district can get the-
Right, right. The main state legislature passed a law that says paper streets will expire unless the municipality takes positive action otherwise. And they are exactly what they say, they're paper streets, they're streets that are shown on subdivision plans, some of them 75, 80 years old. The streets were never developed, never accepted, but they're still shown on paper, still shown on the assessor's maps. And what's happened over time is the Waterville Sewer District and the Water District did extend some of their lines across these paper streets. So, it's important for them to have those streets remain as paper streets, and those are the ones that you see listed.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Mike.
All right, we'll face this again in another 20 years. It has to come up every 20 years.
All right, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All right, next is Resolution 131, 2017.
A resolution providing for support for changes in downtown traffic patterns to make Main Street and Front Street two-way streets. Be it resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers, that the City Council is in support of changes to downtown traffic patterns that would result in Main Street and Front Street becoming two-way streets. Major improvements could also be made at a number of intersections in the downtown area to improve pedestrians' safety. These changes and improvements would be in keeping with the recommendations of the downtown feasibility study completed in December 2016.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mike, you want to just give us a little history on this since it's been quite a while?
Right. It has been a while because the study was completed last December, and the city, Colby, and the state contributed to that study. Really, it's the third study that we've had done. The first one was really just about the intersection near the Hathaway. The second one was somewhat involving the downtown. This last one was much more comprehensive. So, we don't need any more studies. What we need to see is if there's money available through state or federal sources, and maybe private sources too, but especially state and federal sources, to see if we could even make it happen. We're talking about a four and a half million dollar project. That was the estimate last December when the study was completed. I mean, there's still an awful lot of questions that have to be answered. This is just the first step in the process of looking at whether it could realistically happen or not. Part of the realistically is, is there any money that would help fund it? So, what we've heard from DOT and I think the federal sources is, city needs to make some expression of support before you come asking for money. Why should we consider your request if you haven't even made any indication? So, that's what tonight's vote is, I hope, is that we get that expression of support and then can go and do some serious analysis of what might be available for funding.
And Mike, this was really, when we had kind of had a lot of that series of public meetings, was much more intertwined into the greater picture of the fuller revitalization. It really wasn't just about the two streets, isn't that correct?
Yes, right. All of the planning meetings, a lot of that that went on for 12 months or more was about all of the revitalization. You're exactly right, the traffic thing being one component.
And was this part, and I just can't remember, part one of the recommendations that came from MIT when the governor was the mayor?
They had made, I think, three recommendations when that MIT group looked at our Main Street. Number one was to make Main Street more of a corridor, which is the reason you see a building going up on the concourse. They always, a lot of the urban planners felt, looking at our Main Street, and it wasn't just the MIT group, but later groups felt we'd have a more cohesive Main Street by having a more corridor effect and not a big gap. That was recommendation one. Recommendation two was to look at two-way traffic. That was definitely part of that. And the third recommendation was to try to make changes in the intersection, the big intersection near Hathaway, so that pedestrians can cross a lot more safely. I mean, we still haven't figured that out completely. There's certainly some things that can be done, but they should be done along with the two-way traffic question.
Right, it's quite an enormous project. It's not like there's a vote tonight and then we can just flip a switch and turn these traffic directions. There's a lot more input that needs to happen. I think even the night we had, I think there was over 100 people here when we had the study. Jackie, you were there, remember?
Yep.
I mean, there was just so many, the enormity of the project is big. There's a lot of safety features and concerns that we looked at.
And this question is now a city question?
Right.
It's for the city to answer.
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess we'll open it for discussion among the council.
Let's make a couple of comments. As far as this traffic study goes, you know, it's not, doesn't particularly get me excited in regards to how it plays together with the overall revitalization. I have a number of concerns, some of which include, not including the concourse with the traffic study, I feel like the concourse is a bigger traffic issue than Main Street. You know, but I'm not ignorant to the fact of the benefits that, you know, pursuing additional funds from the state and other agencies might help our city, more so in regards to pedestrian safety at the intersections. I think those are major issues. And if it means that Main Street goes to two-way to capture some funds from the state, then so be it. But I just hope that later on down the road, we'll be able to answer some questions that are looming. I know there's a number of constituents of mine that have voiced concern about going to two-way deliveries downtown being one. And the reason why I mentioned the concourse as a major concern is that it's very hard, almost impossible for two, for tractor-trailer traffic to get through the concourse. If we're going to take away a lane on Main Street, which right now, if many of you drive it during the day, you'll notice that the tractor-trailers park off to one side or the other to unload onto Main Street, if we take one of those lanes away, we need to be able to afford the ability of those tractor-trailers or box trucks to get down and behind concourse. You know, and these are, these are questions and details that I think can be ironed out as Mike had mentioned, but I do support pursuing funding options, not obligating the city into any bonding at this point in time. I really want to see what the, what the options are and make the decision when we have them in front of us.
I too concur with a lot of the things that Nick said. I was just came out, I came in from the streets the last few days, and in my neighborhood there is, I feel like there's significant apprehension from my constituents and I'm sure from residents about two-way traffic. And they questioned me about this, this issue tonight. I had to kind of explain to them exactly what it is. And I am certainly in support of looking for outside funding, federal, state, and letting the powers that be do the proper grant writing and look into this. But at the same time, I can tell you, from that apprehension that I've heard from many constituents about the two-way traffic pattern and it becoming maybe a reality, which obviously we have to answer a lot of questions, as Nick said, they are vehemently opposed to any kind of taxpayer money being spent on this, or a rise in property taxes to equalize or participate in this. So, it's, you know, definitely, we are still, I'm still dealing with in my neighborhood, it's in particular in my ward, from a property revaluation that people are suffering from. We are dealing with, you know, fixed and senior income people that are striving to get by from day to day still. Those are real harsh realities still on my street to street. And I'm sure they are in the other wards as well. And I'm sure the vocalization out there is a resounding thunder, it has been for a while. And I certainly, I certainly am in support of finding this outside funding, and I pray if it is to become any kind of reality, that would be the emphasis and the focus of where we go. Taxpayer money, I will stand, I will sit here and say that I would not support if this became further, any kind of inclusion of using taxpayer money at this time, but I will support this for the, for the formal being of looking into the funding, outside funding sources.
Steve?
Whenever we talk about change, change is hard for people, you know, I mean, you know, we all adjust to change in our own way, and I think people are just uptight right now a little bit with the idea of it, but remember that this is just the first step. And if you go back and look in the history of Waterville, if you read about the history of Waterville, when they changed it from two-way to one-way, everybody said it wouldn't work. I mean, and look, it's been like, I think, 60 years since they made the change, so we got to be careful with that. I mean, don't say that something won't work just-
They all were, you know, really happy with the change going from one-way to two-way. Have they met some opposition when they get to some of these relations like Delphine Rockford, who are put up there?
They love it after.
Yeah, I think the important thing, I don't have a vote here, but regardless, if the council should choose to, is making, taking that advice and making sure you are listening to those concerns and incorporating them in the future plan when you should funding become available.
So, I wanted to echo the comments that have already been made in my conversations with business and community organizations on Main Street. I think one of the major concerns is the deliveries. And I also, among my constituents, the major concern is pedestrian safety as well as kind of the broader concerns about what this traffic change will mean, because in fact, looking back at the study, it's not just a question of bringing two-way traffic to Main Street, it's really about changing the entire traffic pattern of the city in a really substantial way. Having said that, I think that it is a really important opportunity for our town to look at what kind of additional resources we can bring to bear to invest in the downtown area, and that that changing traffic pattern could actually increase business traffic, foot traffic in ways that are really helpful and supportive of downtown business and community organizations. But that this is going to be a very slow, measured process, that community participation, business participation, townspeople participation is always going to be central in this process.
Any other questions or comments from the council at this time? All right, I would like to open up to the public, and I see we have a lot of downtown building owners here, particularly like to hear from you too. So, if you could just come to the podium, anyone that has a question or comment, just tell us who you are and where you live, that'd be great.
I live at 50 Burley Street, and I have an interest in several buildings downtown. My concern is, first, let me say that I'm in favor of trying to get some money for the study, but I think one of the biggest problems that we have is that if it is two-way, where will people park? And I think that that's the biggest issue here, because without parking, we won't have any customers.
In my recollection, and I'd have to go back and throughout this, we'll obviously get the information, my recollection from the study, and there's people here who could second this or not, was that when you look at the widths of the road, because there's actually plenty of room to keep a variety of parking scenarios, some that include loading zones and continued diagonal parking, there were multiple scenarios because of the width of our Main Street. So, it's a definite concern, but I, my recollection of the study is this does not eliminate our options as far as keeping-
Right, I think that the biggest parking problem is on the upper part of Main Street. I had made a proposal and it was not accepted in order to have additional parking for the citizens and also for people in one of my buildings. And as I understand, the council did request the city engineer to look into that, and the city engineer indicated, oh, well and good, but where's the money coming from? I don't have any money coming.
Mike, we just got an update on that today, didn't we?
Right.
Behind the Elden Inn.
I'm glad you brought that up, because Mark had planned to start the parking lot at the Elden Inn site today. Knowing that this weather was coming, they decided to hold off because we would create quite a muddy mess. So, that parking lot project is going to start very, very soon.
Okay, so, going to be paved also?
It won't be paved this fall, for sure.
But it'll be available for the public?
Absolutely.
Okay. How many parking spots have you proposed for there?
Do you remember when Greg laid it out, how many there were?
Twenty to 25, I'd say.
Yeah, I think better than 20 spaces there. And our plan is to pave it in the next construction season.
Okay.
Yeah, and possibly lights, I'm not sure about that, but I mean, we'd like to see it as a very well-defined, you know, accepted place.
Okay, well, my primary concern is parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I think you all know me, I'm Cindy Jacobs. I live in Ward Four, and I'm also the chairman of the library board, so I'm downtown a lot. I've made a big effort to spend a lot more time downtown recently, just wandering around, going to the farmer's market, practicing parking down at Head of Falls, which I know, being on the parking committee, we intend to use as free municipal public parking. It is actually really only 800 feet from the intersection of Main and Temple and the lot. Crossing Front Street is very difficult, crossing Main Street's very difficult. If we are trying to make this a community that people live in, the dorm, additional apartments downtown, make this a community that people are living in and thriving in, we need to make our streets safer to cross. And I guess that's all I would like to share with you, because I'm doing it and I'm hoping that we will continue to investigate this. We need to look at parking. I know in the concourse, if we make just a little wider road around the parking, around the entire concourse, and take out the middle lane because we really don't need to go straight through it anymore, we'll have plenty of space to put in a tractor-trailer, and that would be able to make turns, and it should be designed that way. So, I personally hope that we go down this path and continue investigating it for future funding.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And actually, it's important, because I know the parking committee, I believe it was the parking committee, head vote, or was it the Head of Falls Committee?
It was the Head of Falls.
Voted to, they're going to move the Whirlygig to Head of Falls.
Correct.
And other studies have shown that if we actually just make slight changes in the concourse, particularly by tearing out a lot of those curbs that are in there, we can actually, we actually have space in the concourse to pick up more parking than we've lost, which is actually part of one of the easier projects that the city could get involved in, and it's certainly something I hope the city chooses to pursue, not to get too far sidetracked.
Counselors, hello, I'm Nathan Towne, Ward Six. I also own a business downtown on Common Street, Christopher Hastings Confections. I'm also the marketing manager for Waterville Creeds, just one floor below, we own the center. I speak for myself as a, as a business owner and an employee. I've never, ever died nearly parking away from downtown Waterville. I have, however, nearly died countless numbers of times trying to cross Main Street. I don't have solutions, I have lots of questions for sure, but I urge the council to definitely think about safety first when it comes to our downtown, especially when we have Colby students coming. At the Opera House, we have a lot of kids camps, at Common Street Arts, we have a lot of summer camps. And I've got to tell you, if you think it's safe, it's not. It's really dangerous. You know, right now pedestrians just, you know, we give access to cars because that's the best way to, to protect your, to your life. I waved to the folks who, who passed me by on the crosswalk going down Main Street about 40 miles an hour. Thank you, thank you for stopping. So, please, just, just think of safety first. I understand parking is certainly a concern. As a downtown business owner who is looking to move to be right on Main Street where the foot traffic is, Common Street is great, but I want Main Street. It, I'm not worried about deliveries. I, I lived in Boston. Have, have you been downtown in Boston? People figure it out. I have full confidence in, in the city that you guys are doing, you know, you'll do a great job, but just, just think of safety, that's all I can ask.
Thank you.
Most people know me, I'm Rick Bryant, Site Manager, Rick Bryant, Site Manager for CGI right here in Waterville. We're going to be moving downtown very soon. Yay! Thank you, everybody. More important, I'm up here because, no, I, wherever Nate just went, I completely agree with Nate's comment, safety downtown Waterville. I drive a big truck down Main Street, it's bad. I, there's a person parked in front of Holy Cannoli today with a truck, with a tree sticking out of the back of their truck, with an orange flag, completely legal, mind you, but traffic was like coming to halt, and then, I don't know if it was Nate, it might have been, somebody tried to walk across Main Street at that crosswalk? I felt sorry for him. So, yeah, safety, I mean, this is just a vote going to see if we can find some additional money? Do it, please.
Hello, Julian Payne, Ward Five, again, Nick Champagne. I too have almost died many times walking down Main Street, but I believe all of them were deliberate. But I would like to say, it is nice to see the council debating it and being aware of the concerns and not just rubber stamping it. And I do think it is probably, hopefully, an issue that will be bipartisan. And the fact that you've raised concerns from your residents and constituents makes me feel a lot better about the whole process, so it's good to see. Sometimes there's a combination between the two things. My country, that I used to live in England, it's very tight parking, and in crowded downtowns, you would see trucks the size of UPS, but not 18-wheelers. So, maybe there can be a drop-off spot for merchandise for 18-wheelers, then loaded into smaller-sized trucks, because also if you're trying to create this warm and fuzzy feeling of downtown, no one wants to see an 18-wheeler obscuring four shop fronts for an hour. And I hope that all these storms and beeps aren't auspicious, so, thank you.
I just want to say if safety is a concern, and this was something that was a concern when I was on the council, there's no reason we have to wait until there's two-way traffic to deal with slowing down the traffic on Main Street. You know, something like enforcement, putting the police out there a couple of days a week, I mean, how often do you ever see traffic enforcement on Main Street? You know, it's something that doesn't cost a lot of money in just being visible out there and doing these sort of things, or putting something in the crosswalk, you know, those caution things. There's, there's plenty of things that the city can do in the meantime that doesn't cost a lot of money to deal with the safety issue. And so, I just think that's something that we should consider in the short term while we're talking about these issues.
John Holson in the back, didn't, didn't you do a project where you actually painted a crosswalk bright colors and everybody stopped for it?
Yes.
Thank you. I remember that. So, yes, there are, there are some easier solutions in the meantime. So yes, there are, there are some easier solutions in the meantime that we can pursue with regards to the safety issue that have been tested out. Anybody else for the council to take the vote? Chief?
Just wanna make everyone aware that we've had traffic enforcement in the downtown almost every single day during the summer months, and we've had very few complaints about the dangerous intersections or the dangerous sidewalks. We continue to receive those common complaints on parking, but almost every single day since June, I've dedicated an officer down here, so we have done a tremendous amount of traffic enforcement downtown, and I think it's paying off for safety and for parking.
Thank you, chief. Okay, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All right, seven to zero. Next is Resolution 132, 2017.
Resolution providing for bid award, dual compartment Packer Truck. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers, that the city be hereby authorized to award a bid in amount of $216,236 and no cents to Freightliner of Main, Bangor, Maine.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion on this item?
Yeah, I'll just mention, I mean, I had some concerns with the previous vote that we had back in June, May, more or less in regards to the fact that the city, I don't believe the city should be taking over the recycling, so in that sense, I would have voted no on this particular item.
Mark, you said you didn't care what color it is, what color is it gonna be?
It's gonna be orange.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Regarding the cost, the price came in higher than what we budgeted. Think you probably remember, we budgeted two-hundred thousand. The bid price is two-sixteen, so where's the difference gonna come from?
Overall, we have three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in the capital account for equipment, so we're saving a little bit on the next item on the agenda, the sidewalk tractor. The total for the two items that were in the package is two-hundred, excuse me, three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars. So four thousand under the amount in the capital account.
While you're up here, what's the status of the Packer Truck that went down a couple weeks ago? I think it was last meeting we were talking about it, has that been fixed?
Yes, those, those repair items were fixed, but it also broke down again today. The front brakes needed to be adjusted, the slacker adjustments were off, so they were smoking pretty bad by the time we came in. We couldn't even get to Norwich Walk, we had to bring it in. That delayed us probably an hour, an hour and a half, so.
Do you foresee a need to purchase another truck sometime in the near future to be able to sustain two at the same time?
Our current frontline truck will become the backup truck. That's a 2007 Volvo, and it's in pretty good shape, so that'll be our primary backup, and the ninety-nine vehicle will be traded, the one that gives us so much trouble. It's been through three transmissions, as well as several other major components.
We'll take a vote. All those in favor? Next is Resolution 133, 2017.
A resolution providing for bid award sidewalk tractor with detachment. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officer, that the city be hereby authorized to award a bid in amount of $129,774 and no cents to H.P. Fairfield of St. Regan, Maine.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
Question?
Yes, council.
We're going with a hundred-and-twenty-nine, and there was a bid for a hundred-and-twenty-four. Why are we not going with a low bid?
Both vehicles are very comparable, but the, the trackless unit is more adaptable to the existing attachments that we have.
Okay.
I mean, when you put the bid out, if you make a change to the bid, I mean, I would imagine they have certain bid requirements. Did the other bidder know, and did they have another option available that might bring their price down if they were the low bidder at this point?
Regarding adaptability, or?
Right, I mean, it sounds to me, I mean, have you, have you approached the low bidder, the apparent low bidder, to negotiate if there was another attachment or something that they could provide that might bring their price up a little bit, but might still be lower? It's typical bidding prices where you might approach a low bidder like that.
No, because they, the, both companies bid the, the same attachments. We, we are keeping some existing attachments, the airport mowing deck, that's about a twenty-five-thousand-dollar piece, and it fits on a trackless, it's a trackless mowing deck, and we're also keeping the hydraulic boom for sidewalks, that's also a trackless unit.
So the equipment that you're getting can be adaptable to the equipment that you currently have now, so it's a little more adaptable?
Right, yeah. We bought, we've been running the trackless unit since the nineteen-eighties, so we're more set up for that type of machine. And it's, it's performed well when they're newer. Two thousand-two and two thousand-one units that we have have had significant mechanical difficulties in the past four or five years, so having a new machine will make us more effective in getting the sidewalks cleared during the winter.
Well, Regard didn't have a trackless unit available?
No, no, they just sell the MV unit.
I see. Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Any other discussion? Questions? All right, we'll move to a vote. All in favor? Next, Resolution 134, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for police mutual aid agreement.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? Chief?
The mutual aid agreement is not new, it's been around for the whole thirty-one years that I've been here, and we renew it every two years. However, this year, I was looking at the language of the mutual aid agreement, and it refers to Title Thirty-A to make sure that we're in compliance, so I reread that, and obviously, it requires council approval. So I searched back as far as I could, and I'm sure it was probably given by council at one time, but I just couldn't find it. Matter of fact, all our neighbors that we have mutual aid agreements with, Winslow, Faffield, and Oakland, they're all doing the same thing, so just a precaution to make sure that we, that council's aware that we have mutual aid, and it requires your authorization for us to do that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Resolution 135, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for police vehicle bid approval.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Next is Order 136, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
In order providing for acceptance and appropriation of two, of 2017 burn justice assistant grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? Questions? What is it? Can someone, can someone just explain what it is, and, so that the audience can hear, because I know we have these making front of us.
The justice assistant grant is something that most municipal and county police departments receive every year from the state, based on our Part One crimes. This year, the total award to Kennebec County was like forty-three thousand dollars, and that's split between three agencies, Waterville, Augusta, and Kennebec County Sheriff's Office. So this year, the Waterville Police Department, based on our Part One crimes, will receive about fourteen thousand five hundred of that money. I'm hoping to use that money to purchase what they call a fire protocol software program. It is very similar to the emergency dispatching software program that we have right now, where someone were to have a heart attack, someone dial nine-one-one, the dispatchers could pull up that protocol for what a person should do to help someone having a heart attack. The same thing's gonna follow true for the fire protocols. Right now, they're being mandated all, at all state PSAs, mandated. And of course, we dispatch for several other communities, we wanna stay competitive, and so that fire protocol, it's really important that we purchase that. It's about forty thousand dollars, so that would be used as part of that, offset that cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you go up to the podium?
Julian Payne, Ward Five, I just had a quick question for the police chief, so.
Certainly.
With that software package you purchased, does it give you keys or allow you, allow you to share it with any other communities or district, or you can only use that within Waterville?
No, we'll be able to provide that fire protocol to all of the communities that we dispatch for.
Okay, and do they contribute towards the program?
Well, they pay a dispatch fee.
Okay.
Each community pays the city a lot of dispatch.
So that program will help many communities?
Yes.
And that's a service we make money on, dispatching. All right, we'll go for a vote. All in favor? Great. Next, Resolution 137, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Resolution providing for authorization, the renewal of liquor licenses expiring between October first, 2017, and December thirty-first, 2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? There's five in favor, two abstain. Resolution 138, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Resolution providing for issuance of a license to Hampton and Waterville.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Resolution 139, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for issuance of a liquor license to Hampton and Waterville.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, we are at the management report, and we have a special presentation by Paula Raymond. And so, Jack, Paula, do you wanna get the lights yet?
Not quite.
Not quite, all right. You being charged.
Good evening, I'm Paula Raymond, I'm from Ward Seven, and I thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity to speak on a project that's been in the works actually a lot longer than I had thought. I've been on, in the works for about two years, but when I've actually been researching the history of what we've been doing in the city, it's actually ten years old. So, and it's sort of been in and out, the kinds of things that we've been working on. In the first PowerPoint presentation that I put together, there was eighty-one slides. There are only twelve tonight. And I was, I was advised by our city admin, who I shared the eighty-one slides with, I asked for his advice, and he politely said, just cut it back a bit. So we came up with twelve slides. I believe there might be thirteen, but there's at least just that much. I did send them out to all of you council members, though, and to the mayor and to the city admin, so that you would see the kind of work that we did and all the different graphs that we put together, so that we'd have the appropriate data and the evidence to start discussion, serious discussion on a rental registration form with fees. So that is something that we've been working on, and this summer, I mentioned before, we put in about eleven hundred hours of that work. And what we came up with were eight strands and benchmarks for each one, we established a number of units in the city for rental, we determined who qualified for rental registration fees, we didn't name individuals or corporations, we didn't do nonprofits, we concentrated on the buildings themselves, single-family homes that were rented, two, three, four, and five family homes. It was irrelevant as to whether it was a home for the elderly or low income. We mentioned the benefits from the registration fees, the accountability, the employment rising, healthier, safer neighborhood, streets and city overall, housing values would increase, schools would hopefully improve, and crime would decrease. We presented a scenario of cost of registration, who and how to pay, timeframe for first-time registrations. We explained foreclosures, terms, affidavit commencement, complaints, clerk certificates, deed in lieu of judgment and foreclosure deeds. Currently, there are ninety-one that are in judgment and fifty-five in foreclosure. We explained how we conducted our survey of vacant abandoned buildings throughout all seven wards. We created graphs and developed to demonstrate a visual that was reflected in each ward in areas of homes for sale, foreclosure status, rental properties per ward, converted properties in each ward, crime reports from one month of graft, and each ward represented, housing issues for face, that the elderly are facing, properties exempt from property taxes. I always put this in my slides now because it's just a big deal to me that somebody said that, so. The overview, it's very difficult when you have a PowerPoint presentation on paper, the hard copy, you can't even read it. So if you'll just sort of look down here, I'll just highlight what I bolded, because our overview was to design and recap the eighty-one slides, which we did. We wanted to project the intention, to create the awareness, that we do need some kind of a rental registration program with fees. We did the study and the research, we went through all the kinds of different, we did online, we did assessor's office, we did surveys, the local newspaper, conversations with property owners, the city of Waterville websites, the current tax rolls, specific housing issues, private multi, all of that we worked on this summer. The significance was to lend evidence so that a rental registration ordinance with fees would be appropriate to bring to the table. The scope of the study is citywide, it's specific to the vast array of rental properties within the city, along with the aforementioned access to Maine and other states actively, successfully invested in rental registration forms. The argument is to establish a licensing program, and the evidence was stated in slide number four. Go ahead, okay? You can read the introduction, the rental registration form, the purpose is to collect data and evidence that will enable city council, city admin, and mayor to support and implement a rental registration form with fees. And the evidence was the housing stock that we have. There are three hundred and eight houses that were for sale as of June, and those are the different wards that we looked into, we looked into all wards. Ward Four happens to have the most as of June, and it was about eighty. Number of vacant and abandoned properties, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven. Number of converted buildings, that means single-family to multi-units, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four. Number of rental units, from single to eight-unit buildings, with concentration in wards six and seven, two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-two possible rental units. There are four and a half pages that is right in the front of this document that I picked up from the assessor's office, that talks about a hundred-and-ninety-nine condos. I'm not sure that those are all owned condos, which means there are possible another two-hundred units that are just labeled condos, that might be rental properties, rounding us up to about three thousand rental units. I can't confirm that as of yet, I just haven't had time to go in and do that. The next slide, babe? The history behind the work that we've been doing actually started in two thousand and seven with the South End Neighborhood Association. They established a strategic plan, and one of the focuses was on housing. This information, and I will mail this to all of you, because I just picked this up in the last couple of days, it's old material I had that I happened to find again. It's located on pages ten and eleven, and the goals are three and four, and the objectives were one, two, three, ten, eleven, and twelve, and they all reflect a need for our CEO to have more time, more boots on the ground, I guess you'd call it, so that the work could be done. In seven, on two thousand and eleven, the creation of the South End Capital Improvement Account, I threw that in because what happens is when we have a property that is sold or is taken up for taxes, or is raised, if there's any monies to be had, it goes into this account, which we use to, to make better parks, or to buy a single-family home, but some improvement in the South End. In two thousand and thirteen, I went to those meetings, there were seven of them spread over a period of seven months. They were hosted by the Central Main Growth Council with Daryl Sterling as the executive director. And basically, as a group, and there were a lot of people who attended these meetings, a lot of people. We talked about every aspect of the city, we set up plans, we set up dates, we set up a timeframe for all of them, and one of them, again, was housing. And that was on pages two and three and four, and it was numbers five, six, seven, and eight, very specific to the housings that we're looking at and what can we do about it. So this has been ongoing for quite a while. In two thousand and fifteen, a citizen presented a rental registration form, actually had put one together. Today, the Quality of Life Committee, a branch of the South End Neighborhood Association, is here to continue the process, so that we actually can look at it seriously, come up with some kind of, of program that we can, that the landlords could be happy up with some kind of program that we can, that the landlords could be happy with, the tenants can be happy with, the city council can be happy with, and that the citizens overall can benefit from. Next slide, babe. Next slide. Okay. Steps to implement, we've already had our first meeting, we're having our second meeting September 16th, and everybody's welcome to come. It'll be at the Escalon Building on Silver Street at 1:00 PM. The support and input from city officials, I've met with the assessor, I've met with the assistant assessor, I've met with the city admin, and there isn't anyone that I have met with that has not been open and fair, and just very supportive of the work that we're doing. It's been really quite refreshing. It's very, it's nice to be able to say that, because that's not what you hear, and oftentimes what we hear isn't really what's going on. So I've been very pleased to have worked with everybody, and I've been invited to work with them again, and that's just very special to me. Support, we need, we want to get in touch with our landlords, we want them to be a part of the process, because they will feel the most affected by this. So I'm just beginning to be on the phone, I've done Facebook with one family that has many, many houses, or I should say, units here in the city of Waterville, and they don't live in the city of Waterville, but they live across the river. And so I'm just starting to get in touch with them and share what we're trying to do, and telling them we want their input, we really want their feedback, we want them to be a part of this. Reading materials again, ordinances in the city, different cities and different states. I have to say that we do have Portland, that's our only current representative in the city, and the reason they did this, and it's quite sad, is that the six students that died in that fire prompted them to do this. There wasn't a landlord who wasn't for this at that time, but it's unfortunate that it had to be that to move them. We certainly don't want that here. And it was a rundown building, and it did need services, and unfortunately for this gentleman who was the landlord, it just isn't a pretty picture for anybody. So that's another big reason why I want landlords involved. Present a rough draft ordinance, I've already started a rough draft with the things that I'm pulling from different cities in different states, it's all the way from California down here to New Jersey, there's just a wealth of cities who are already implementing a registration form for rental properties. We want to define the purpose and use the revenue gathered from the fees charged. Tentative date would be, and I'm such a dreamer, January of 2018, with six months grace period for people to get all of their registrations together, and the fees that had been determined, so that by 2019, everybody's on board and everything is working well. Yeah? Why a registration form is to establish a license program in the city in order to create an additional procedure for the enforcement of city codes and regulations. Big deal over here right now, the codes, and I'll show you in the slide, it's just, it's tough, it's tough, and it's tough for one person to be doing it all this time. And we've been told from one year to the next, there's not enough money to provide another CEO. Protect and promote public safety, health and welfare, ensure the safer rental housing stock, protect surrounding property values, and improve accountability of rental units. Property values are important to people who own property near rental properties, it's a big deal, and not everybody takes care of their property. And that's just something that's prevalent. Provide an efficient system for compelling landlords to correct violations and to maintain in proper condition rental property within the city of Waterville. And accountability, accountability from both the tenant's perspective, the landlord's perspective, the CEO, the codes, all of that. We're all a part of this, and in some way, we all have a responsibility. Gary? Here is what I believe, and this is just, you know, my, I don't do the budget, so, three to five years of action plan, cost-effective, pays for itself. Hire three CEOs, paid through this program, first two CEOs to monitor businesses in public private buildings, colleges, schools, and churches, the third CEO to concentrate on all residential buildings, single-family and multifamily units, hire a full-time secretary, there was one there once, to take care of regular duties and rental registrations along with fees, trained on inspections, that's something that's a big deal. The gentleman, this Mr. Arthur Howe, who was the forerunner for the Portland Rental Registration Forms, said that there is a program out there, it's about $1,800 a person, but it's an excellent program, and it needs to be done, we need to be trained in this. I even put three vehicles for the three CEOs, instead of them using their vehicles. I don't know if they're reimbursed, I don't know if they, the city pays for some of their insurance, I don't know if they get mileage for their travels, but this would be probably a better way to go. Purchase of garbage cans, now that's Portland's latest, there's, it's an incentive, and Portland bought thousands of garbage cans, because there's garbage everywhere. And we're kind of experiencing the same thing. A few weeks ago, Dan Chase had us go on Sunday to the, over by where that big statue is, and we spent two, three hours cleaning it up, he must have had 20 bags filled with that. So again, an incentive for the landlords as a way to say thank you for supporting us, letting them be the first to help their tenants to start putting the garbage back into cans, so that it's not such a mess on the grounds. An ACO, we have such an influx of animals in Ward 7, especially feral cats, and it's just overflowing. And this ACO that we have now, I believe does more than one county, does two or three counties, you know, he can't be everywhere, and it's part-time. So it's just, these are the things that I would like to see our Quality of Life Committee have talked about at different times in our meetings. The next one, babe. These are the quotes from the morning Sentinel, two years, three years ago now, when the Gilman Street was being built, and St. Francis was being talked about and built. And it just captured really a lot of where we're coming from, and I'll let you just read The last one, 46% of our households were occupied by people who own them, and the average is 72% in Maine.
Did you follow up on that particular statistic to see?
I didn't.
More, my question is, I mean, we are an urban area, we're a city, we're a service center.
Mm-hmm.
And I wonder, I mean, if that's comparing us to, you know, a rural town like Oakland or Belgrade, it's gonna be obviously drastically different.
Well, I don't think, I think it's overall, because it says the average is 72% in Maine, so I don't think it was specific to any town or county or anything.
Right.
So I think it's the overall picture of what the average is in the state, and I did not compare it to anything local. These are from a former council, I don't know if he's still here, yes he is, Eric Thomas. This was taken out of the Waterville newspaper. What was significant to me was when he said, "Living in a building that is safe is different than living in a building that is nice." And everybody wants to live in something nice. And that just really rang true to me. The last one, Gary, please. These are from two landlords, and again, it's in the paper, so it's public record. And if you read it, I've read it several times. Of course, any tenant would love to move into a building like that. It's sort of telling to me. And I appreciate the frustration of landlords, I appreciate the frustration of tenants. There's got to be a happy median, and the Quality of Life Committee people really believe it's with a rental registration form. It's that at the beginning. Another one, Gary, please. Right now, and I took the street numbers off deliberately, because nobody needs to know. You have it on your sheet, but these are places that are being renovated for two-family dwellings, some of them are single-family dwellings, most of them have no permits right now. Two of them have been razed, one of them was a burn on Summer Street, we're all familiar with that one, but I didn't see a burn permit. And the other one was under a purchase and sales agreement, but I didn't see a permit for him to take it down, even though it was part of the purchase and sale agreement. The one on Summer Street was a store for many, many years, he had a permit in his window until just this weekend, and for some reason it's gone, I don't know if he put new glass in and just didn't put the permit back up, but he was the only one out of all of these that has a permit. Sherwin Street, no permit visible, and I'm not saying didn't have them, no permit visible. Gold Street, several years in renovation, no permit visible. Carrion Street, this is an out-of-state owner with an out-of-state contractor. It's all gutted out, I know that they're going to convert, it's a single-family home, very little land, nice little place, they're going to make a two-family out of it. It's a single-family home.
I'll just point out that there are certain activities that you can do within your home that do not require a permit.
And I checked with, I came to see the CEO, Greg was there, and he shared that with me, but when it comes to plumbing and electricity, when they're going to rent it out, it has to have a permit.
Are you sure they're doing plumbing and electric?
Oh yeah, it's gutted out. As a matter of fact, the young man down the road, when I met up with him, because I'm at the Moore Street Gardens quite a bit, I always say, "How you doing? What are you doing today?" And he said, "Well, this weekend I'm putting in the electrical wiring."
Do we know if they had a permit?
I don't see, I actually took the time to go to the CEO's office, and I looked at all the permits that were available, and those were not there. But again, I'm not sure, you know, there could be more that's happened since then, because one of the disclaimers I have is that everything is time-sensitive, and people do do the right things, and things change, but when I went to see the CEO, he wasn't there, but Greg, again, shared with me, we looked at the electrical permits as well, and there wasn't any for any of those buildings at the time, not to say that it didn't happen. So what I'm doing is showing you where, you know, I've got nine buildings here in one ward that are being converted for rental purposes, while two are being razed, one of them's already gone, he's supposed to keep it land. The other one, I was told, and that's hearsay, so it's third-hand, that's the other one on Summer Street that was a burn initially, he's planning to make it a single-family home when he does the footprint again. So I don't know how real that is, because I haven't met with the person who owns it. So these are big issues that we have just in Ward 7 alone. That's a lot. That's a lot. And it's a lot with no permits.
Yeah.
Okay? So it at least needs to be entertained, we at least need to research it.
Yeah, and I'm a code officer out in Chelsea, and you can, you know, remodel the inside of your home without changing the footprint of your home without a permit, however, it is required by the state of Maine that any plumbing or electrical do get inspected, and the plumbing permits actually have to be sent to the state, because the state gets a fee of those too.
So these are just things that...
I've paid in my house before.
Yeah. The other thing that's happening on the Carrion Street, which I'm a little disappointed, it's an old building, so the slats are there, because it was gutted out to the outside walls, and they don't intend on insulating it. You know? And again, the contractor is only speaking for his boss who owns the property, and he said, you know, because I asked about it, and he said, "No, we don't plan to insulate it." They're doing the ceiling and the roof part of it, I guess, and that's where they're going to insulate. So, you know, somebody moving in, seeing brand-new sheetrock and brand-new floors, aren't going to know that. Okay? All right? If you'll do one more slide for me, babe, please. Ha, here's the money. Somebody, one of the people that I asked for advice, said, "Show them the money." So, this is a pipe dream to some degree, but it's still, for me, sort of realistic. It's a high amount of a fee, but it's a three-to-five-year plan, if you just add two zeros to that 2,722, that's what you get for money in the first year. No property tax increase, tenants become invested in their community, because landlords can increase their rent by $10 a month. That's not bad, because if a landlord, if their electricity goes up, if their fuel goes up, whatever goes up for them, if their taxes go up, the tenants get that anyway. So...
How many of these 2,722 units were considered Section 8 housing? Did you separate that out?
I did not do that.
And if those landlords raise rent on no particular individuals, I don't believe that they're going to recapture that from the government.
About 500 subsized units, is that the right?
Probably. Is it 500? Okay.
So, I mean, that's just a concern that I'm bringing up.
And what I would appreciate, quite honestly, Nick, is for people such as yourselves to come to meetings, so that we can talk about those things, so that we can be equitable for everybody. It's not a single person's job. It really isn't. And your council people, you know, we have our administrator, we have a CEO, we have professional people that really, at this point, from my perspective, I'll continue to invite, and really need to be there, so that we can follow through this. Because I've seen, there's 35 cities that I researched, very briefly, I sent two out to all the people who came to the last meeting, including the council members who came, I asked them to do the reading, so that they would have some information to bring to the table. I'm going to do a rough draft of a rental registration form, they're going to shoot out concerns, and what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, and ask questions, just like you just did. You know, landlords coming in, I don't want an argument, I don't want people mad, I just want them to say, "Hey," you know, "Where do you expect me to do this, or how?" That's what helps the table move, that's what helps us put it on the table, so it's not personal, and let's work toward finding a way to support the CEO, to support that department, so that we don't have to be looking, because for those of us who have been investing for all these years through our taxes, we're losing right now. There's always a cut in services, and we keep losing. And so we get angry with people who need our services in other ways, and it's not anybody's fault. So we have to find, our state and our federal government have determined that we're on our own. We don't get that 5% back from the state. It's not going to happen.
The conceptual concern that I have is, you start implementing a fee on this, usually, and I quote, "A fee, a tax, whatever you want to call it," what happens is, is that the people on the cusp down on the bottom are usually the ones that are getting pushed up, essentially you're shifting everyone down, so you're moving that Section 8 housing out. And I think that that's the intent, and if that's the case, then we've got to start knocking on some doors and telling people, "This apartment's not going to be available for too long, once these fees are lifted." Because the rent's going to be raised, and I can tell you, it's probably going to be out of Section 8 housing, and a lot of those homes are just going to be left vacant, is my biggest concern.
Yeah. And I don't see that with all the work I've done, I really don't. I don't see it costing that much money per month. Like I said, it's a $10 a month, it's $120 a year, it's not like it's $100 a month, or $25 a month that it's been raised, it's $10. And then the landlord gets to keep 20, because he only needs to give you 100.
I mean, what I've learned from going door-to-door and talking to people is that what's $10 to me might not be $10 to my neighbor, and it might not be $10 to the person down the road. The point is, is that it's the money, you can't say, "Well, I can do $10 a month," but doesn't mean that everyone else can. And I don't think everyone else can, I really don't, and in this city, I think we have, we have a low-income population that...
Right, right.
I think it's something you need to think about, going door-to-door now, and I bet other candidates here are hearing the same thing, I mean, I just talked to a gentleman the other day, and his comment was, "It just seems to me like Waterville's just always trying to find another way to increase the costs and to get another buck from the people who live here."
Right.
And I am telling you this not to slam the work you've done, or insult the work you've done, but to give you that perspective, because it's something that you need to keep in your mind, that there's, that perception is out there. It's actually more prevalent still today than I thought it was, it's pretty heavy.
And I can appreciate that, but I feel like I'm coming from a different angle. I really do. I feel like I'm coming from, because again, you're looking, if you go in my neighborhood and talk to people who own properties next to people who are renting, it's a whole different question and a whole different statement that they're saying.
Also happens is that it compounds, so now you're forcing the landlord to fix up their homes, now they have capital costs that they have to incorporate into their rent, so now your rent's going up by $10, but also it's going to go up by another 20 to 30 to cover the cost of fix the home to get it up to the code that it needs to be.
So are we suggesting that people keep living in deplorable conditions? Because there are deplorable conditions.
What about Ward 4? I guess, I know Eric, you've been waiting, so I...
Can I just say something?
Please.
I mean, I'm actually sort of excited that you're doing this work, because this is something we discussed when we were redoing the comprehensive plan, and there was actually language in the comprehensive plan that was adopted by the city council that speaks to doing exactly this. And I think that councils have to remember that in the revale, property tax burden was shifted from landlords to homeowners. And a lot of the landlords are the ones that are using the code enforcement officer, and a lot of the police services are being focused on these properties, and this is a way to sort of shift those costs to where those costs are being created. So I just, and I agree, there's other things that go into this, but I, you know, I don't, I think it's too soon to sort of dismiss this offhand as not a viable thing that we should be looking into.
I don't think we're dismissing it, I mean, but at the same time, and actually, the biggest burden was shifted from commercial, and a couple pockets like the South End, where you could still buy a house for the same price you could 50 years ago. So there was a couple pockets of residential, but there were commercial values, because none of this development had happened, but hopefully that they...
Apartments are commercial properties. Apartment buildings are commercial properties, they're properties generating income for the landlords. And the other thing is that we made a point when we were discussing housing of inviting landlords to these discussions, and I will tell you that some of the more responsible apartment owners were in support of this, because they felt like other people were getting away with... away with things, and they were, because they were responsible, land, property owners were bearing costs that other people weren't because they were getting away with things because of lack of enforcement and, you know, those sorts of issues. So I just think there's a lot more to this discussion to be had, and I think it's definitely a worthy discussion.
So it will be done by Jamie?
Yes, sir.
My name is Charlie Kellenberger, I'm a landlord in the city of Waterville. This is really, other than I picked up through the grapevine that this was going on, I had no intention of speaking tonight, I just came to listen. But when I look at a little of this, and you take that figure that's up there, obviously, hopefully it's open for negotiation, but if you own 60 units in the city of Waterville, you've just asked me to put out $6,000 on $20,000 worth of profit. Doesn't, doesn't add up. One council did kind of make mention to that. I realize that there's an assumption that most landlords are multimillionaires, are making hundreds of thousands of dollars on their tenants, and that's as far from the truth as can be. I'd be more than willing to sit down privately with anybody on this council and open up my books and show you how little money I do make and how much work I do put in to maintain my property, to try to keep good tenants in my properties. The number of calls I get at midnight, 2 o'clock in the morning, those type of issues, being a landlord is not an easy job. Now, I don't say there aren't some landlords in Waterville that aren't doing their job, but the majority of landlords in Waterville, I do believe, are taking care of their property based on what they're able to get for rent. And you brought up Waterville Housing. Waterville Housing controls the price of rent in Waterville, even though they'll deny it, they control the price that you're able to receive. So I hope that I will see you, and I will be at those meetings, and we'll be able to talk there, but this is the first I've heard of it, and I'm not really sure that a whole lot of landlords are going to be in favor of at least that type of fee.
Okay. But is this... I almost gave up.
Is there more slides, Paula?
No.
No. More, I want to make sure that you had a chance to get through.
Seventy more slides.
Paula, it was a wonderful presentation. The, the amount of data that you provided to us is remarkable. I really, you know, for the efforts that you've put in, in your internment, it's, it's hard. I only went to Ward five to walk, I can't imagine going around all the whole city of Waterville to do it, and I know it's an incredible feat, and I appreciate you doing it.
I appreciate that, Nick. I'm dedicated to something, actually, because my concern is that we have two very, we have a private institution, and we have a philanthropist who has literally given us millions of dollars to straighten out a small piece of our city, and what are we doing around it to compliment and say, "You know what, we really appreciate what you're doing, and so we're going to do our part to clean up our end now." And this, like I said, this is 10 years old, this has been thought of, and Eric confirmed that, this has just been ongoing. And my belief system is that it's time we do something. And it's a scary figure, and I'm glad Mr. Kellenberger came, I wrote to his wife actually on Facebook and asked her, you know, and let them know that we would be doing this. So I'm glad that he showed up tonight. And I really genuinely want the landlords to be here, but I also want tenants to be here. I want all of us involved so that in the end, it's not a battle, that we really are going to come to terms, because we have one CEO who's retired, who's still hanging around. I went twice, he was not there. I called, I didn't get a return call, I can't blame him. He's one CEO. We have an ACO that we never see even though we call because he can't. And we have a, an infestation of feral cats ruining people's properties, digging up their gardens, you know? And then we have really living conditions that are not fair to anybody, they're not equitable for, I would never, you know, and people don't want to be down there, that if you read what they said, you know, there are places people don't want to live in the city of Waterville, how sad is that? You know? So to me, something needs to be done, we don't want it coming from people who own properties because that's been a big issue for quite a while, it needs to come from somewhere. You know? And we're not going to get it from the state and the federal government, they're done with us. They're saying we're on our own, cities and towns. So let's show that we can do that. That's just my premise, so.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you very much.